Got the list that the council gave me, or what they'd like to see. And we spoke about that. And some things we can do, some things are out of our control. Force dispatch, you know, the way they report them. That's kind of where we're at. Waiting for another meeting and to nail down if you're all okay with that number, or...
Is there anything besides dispatch that is a showstopper from your perspective?
Um, not really. Just that list of things, you know, one of the things in there was two per shift. There's no way.
It was one or two.
Right, right, right. I just want you all to know that the two, the one I'm okay with, we can make that work. But the two, I, not the two, I don't think. Now, there's days, you know, like the other day, you got four up here. Now granted, it's because of the fire, road shutdown, things of that nature. There, there, let's not kick out that there may be two or three deputies on my call up here. So, I don't want you to think like that. We're not going to stick one deputy up here on the call that needs two or three. But it's more dedicated control. More dedicated control. Maybe twenty more. Yes.
Ladies, getting two more deputies out of the academy in four weeks?
Yeah, four weeks from Thursday. One of them at the ground, one of them at the shore, at the end process.
One of them a fraction.
Right.
Hopefully you guys can get together and set up a agreement. Hold on, man, on the twenty ninth.
I expect I need some time next week.
What's the date for the things to be signed by, Mayor?
April twenty ninth.
April twenty ninth?
That's our next special meeting. Six P. M., we'll be voting on that.
That's at six, you said?
Six, six.
So, the steps, just for my case, the steps here are for the subcommittee to get together and decide on the details of what our proposal is, then that comes back to council for us to vote.
Right. If you guys want to give that to me so I can make copies for council and they can be looking at it and deciding what they want to do tomorrow.
Right.
And that was...
And I would expect at some point, maybe the attorneys need to make sure the agreements that...
Uh, the, uh, the local agreements will have to be passed by ordinance, correct?
So, just so we can get our two jobs in a row from the...
And if we have a first agreement, it's not acceptable.
See, that would be the first one. So, okay. Wednesday, Monday, correct, I believe. Thursdays and Fridays are generally my most open day, so a few days before would probably be all right. If I get something on Thursday, I often can get to them. If I get something on Monday, things aren't...
In our B.O. business, the local agreement with the road department, I spoke with Judge Dillon on that, and he would like for that to remain the same. Everybody should have a copy of that public agreement, that their local agreement in your packet. And just be going over that and decide if that's what you want to continue to do. And when we read that first notice on the twenty ninth on that, it hasn't really changed, but we had to update it from two thousand, I think it was, Martha Hicks, so...
Yes, we do, does. Not retreating.
Absolutely. As we move on to the air local agreement with the fire department, Lee, what's going on?
Yes, ma'am.
The fire department, where's the bar?
Well, there's way back there.
Way back there? Yeah, here, there's someone.
Basically, the contract is without a lot of change. The one that you have in your hand, I just updated the equipment listing. And also, Mayor, if you would, we look at number... I won't be finding it. Oh, yeah, number nine. Because it still had, at the time, the Grant County Dispatch Center. And we are no longer dispatched by that agency. So, we changed it to designated dispatch center and put in the parentheses Kentucky State Police. Number nine, on page.
So, is the city of Brent... Oh, you got the one from last year. Did you send that today?
Yes, I did. I've got copies if you want.
We'll get it from you later.
Okay. Anyway, we updated the listing of the equipment, highlighted and designated the dispatch center of whom we report to, report our activities. Also, the amount of sixty-five thousand that was agreed. The only other thing to address is Mayor Limbgood and myself discussed a ten thousand dollar for equipment upgrades, including truck maintenance or new equipment. And he did not want to put it in the contract last year, stating that it was something that he felt that the new council and the new mayor should address to see if they wanted to do that. Go ahead, ma'am.
I spoke with Mr. Limbgood on the phone, and he said that was not correct.
How so?
He said there was no agreement with you, two thousand dollars.
That was my understanding when I was discussing what you said to...
Well, legally, I'm in the state of that, but I'm just related to people.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. But that was the conversation to have with you guys as newly elected, and ask you to continue that on. Because I hope...
And I would like to continue that, and make it second by some means.
We're not asking for...
We're not voting right now?
No, but I'm making my...
And I'm the mayor.
Yeah, and I...
So, let's get that straight to you.
Yeah, let's see that straight. We're the legislative body.
Yes, that's right. We're not voting on that, and it's not only a unit of vote.
I can make my, uh, my, uh...
Well, you're gonna find y'all a record this council. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We're looking at a couple of improvement projects that are now ongoing at the department. One being the new tender. The next is we have to replace all of our air packs. And that is a National Fire Protection Association requirement that at fifteen years, they have to be replaced. We're within an eighteen to twenty month window that they're going to expire. Now, we've got a program that we're putting into effect, but that ten thousand's going to help us quite a bit to meet that. We're looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand over a five-year period.
Think you're gonna have to borrow them?
That we're gonna have to shell out for the new air packs and new bottles.
Do you need grants?
We tried, but the problem that we've got is that since the AFG grants are now being applied to what they call populous designation, they will put the money out for what they deem to do the most good for the most number of people. So, we are now competing with the likes of Covington, Newport, Independence, et cetera. We can try for the grants. If we get them, then that's fantastic. But some of the grants come with X amount of dollars are needed as a contribution from the department itself. So, yeah, a hundred and eighty thousand, say it's a ten percent contribution from us, that's still eighteen thousand. That's a little bit more than we've got for contingency.
And those packs, not having those updated packs are gonna put our firefighters at risk. Is that correct?
Not just that, it's gonna put my butt at risk. Because, yeah, if somebody becomes injured, whether it has anything to do with the air packs or not, I am criminally and civilly liable. And it...
Yeah, and the mayor wants to argue more than ten thousand dollars.
I also want to argue why we had a house fire three hundred feet away, and Dry Ridge was the first one on the scene. Let's argue that.
Because we have a volunteer fire department.
Well, and he lives close by, and he told me this week that someone was staying at the fire department, that in and out, between shifts.
When they, when they pull their call nights.
That's not the first house that Dry Ridge got here first, maybe we need to look into it.
Did you hear that quick, by your head? How did you hear something?
I called him.
Did you call the nine-one-one, or did you call your head?
That's not your concern.
Yes, it is my concern, because somebody died in that fire.
Yeah, tell him about it, and the police that knew that there was drugs going on.
And there was a delay in calling for that fire, because our council...
That house exploded.
He was setting nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one had already been called.
Nine-one-one had already been called.
I knew that.
Ladies, I would, I would suggest, if I made the...
Let's stay on topic here.
...the gentleman, make his presentation, make his...
You need to go out to make a decision.
Those are my questions.
Thank you.
And I'll answer them as factually as I can. However, I am going to point out, that is the nature of a volunteer department. And it's hard, and trust me, it weighs on me. But we're not getting volunteers like we did in the seventies and eights. There are very few people that own businesses around here, that work farms around here that volunteer. Everybody's got a job, at least one, if not two. So, there are hard questions to ask, there are things to look at. But right now, I have to come up with ways to stay both federally, state, and locally certified, and do the best damn job we can.
And you know what my goal is?
Yes, ma'am.
We've already talked about that, so thank you, and I know that you're working on it for the public.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, can I ask you a question about the Scott air packs? Is it the cycles of pressurization and depressurization that drive the life cycle of the air packs?
No, believe it or not, sir, they consider it to be the bottles. It is the carbon fiber bottles that we are purchasing, that the NFPA states will be good for no more than fifteen years.
So, the cost of replacement is for the bottles themselves? Can you continue to use the same regulators and mass?
We're using the frames, but the problem that we have is that Scott, being a business for profit, is pretty smart. They will change their model numbers, and with it, they'll change circuitry. Once the motherboards go out in these packs, then you no longer have lighting, you no longer have the required alert system.
Okay, so what you're telling me, you can't mix and match though?
Exactly, sir. Because we're going to try to get the most use out of our packs. We're actually gonna be pushing the limit by a few months, but because we can't go through and order twenty-four at a time. We've gotta do it in phases. And so, when that occurs, we'll still be running on some old packs when phase three comes into view.
Thank you. Listen, shoot that one question. How many paid departments are, 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 are grand that?
How many paid? You have got Dry Ridge, that is, that has paid staff on duty, augmented by volunteers. You have Williams Town, which has part-timers during the day, and they use what's called POC, Paid On Call. Like one, a couple of our guys do at the station, they'll pick two to four days a month, they'll come in, they'll spend the afternoon, evening, maybe spend the night, and then they fulfill the requirement for the month. Then they go home. We don't have enough personnel willing to do that, to completely staff the station. And during the daytime, when everyone's at work, things get rather tight. I thought that I know right now three structured fires by myself until backup units have arrived. One of them be in the post office. And that was fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Can you move on to the three of, or excuse me, the resumes for... I have three resumes that have been handed in from the building vacant C.L. City Council. Is there any others?
I've had seven additional information that from Todd Roberts that was not included in our package.
Is Todd Roberts here? Okay, I have just... This is Todd, so... All right, guys, who do you want to start?
Let's start with Todd.
No, I didn't come on out and interview the fellow.
I'm Todd Roberts, I've been across the street for the last twenty, even a couple of years now. I'll pretty much read the book, so if you get any questions, we'll go with it.
What interests Todd in City Council, what would she like to see different happen on City Council, or within the city?
First and foremost, um... Kind of touching off on what the chief fire department said on my case, is if it's not me, then who? It's scheduling-wise, I was gonna run at election time, and I had a job that just wouldn't work out for that. And I tried to do a hundred percent. If I'm gonna put my foot in, I'm gonna put both in. And I'd like to see the city do, continue to grow volunteer fire department a lifetime ago, twenty years ago. And as they went from a volunteer fire department to a district. Once it become a district, that was a nightmare that I didn't want part of anymore. And I know the problems with the volunteers and not having enough people. So, I understand where you're coming from. I made a lot of day shift runs, two or three people on a house with a big tent. I would just like to see the city be better. It's not bad, but let alone...
Todd, you said I'm gonna do more, but then you mentioned...
Uh, I spent forty years elected onto the Kentucky Motorcycle Association, which is a grassroots foundation for motorcycleless rights, helmet laws. Spent a lot of time in Frankfurt. From that, uh, I've been on, in my job profession, I've been on tight budgets, time restraints, on time and under budget, preferably way under budget. And I agree that every job should be three or four or ten bids to get something done. Hold them accountable. If you don't like the job they, they've done, hold the check till Friday.
Worked at IHF pharmaceuticals?
Yes.
Where do you be there?
That was fifteen-ish years ago.
Okay. Is this capital expenditure portion budget?
Yes. I was a facility supervisor for a three hundred panel square foot pharmaceutical warehouse.
So, you bring all of that...
Anything that happened to you? Did the color, how was you in everybody on board? What would you do?
Uh, I believe that would be... I'm not sure if that could be a mayor choice or a council choice, but I would like to see if, if I'm mayor, I would get four of our colors, bring the council, this is what I like, you guys pick. At least get close. If somebody wants to paint this whole room Barbie pink, no, I can't go for that. But a neutral, doable color, yeah, I could see that. Thank you.
What did you do in the military, what did you do in engineering?
I was a combat engineer.
Pardon?
Combat engineer.
So, what, is that building bridges or...
Building bridges, blown up bridges. I went, the day I went to sign up, I had it set in my head, I was a military police or I'm coming home. They opened up this checkbook and said, here, we can do this, we can do this job here.
In, okay, in the combat engineering group, making civil structural stuff, road, roads, bridges.
Roads and bridges, airstrips, minefields.
I think they all asked the same question up tonight.
Do you have anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Shelley, we have Shelley before. I'm Shelley Floyd. I've never actually held a public office, but I have experienced in a public office. My dad was the county clerk, my grandfather was a county clerk, and I actually worked up in that office for six and a half years, I think. I'm now an accountant, senior accountant at Macy's. I work in their capital control department, high-controlled budget, probably three hundred billion. We do construction, new construction, remodels. I handle facilities projects. We're putting in backstage projects now. I'm familiar with bidding, I'm familiar with budgeting, I'm familiar with planning. We do have processes in place, so there's certain spending limits. I have to make sure they're gonna adhere to the guidelines. And I also just finished a tax season, I worked at H&R Logging Company yesterday, so I have to do that. And I'm tired.
Shelley, what would you like to see?
Um, I'd like to see some of the negative publicity go away, and I know that's not entirely one person's fault, but I feel that maybe I could work well with everybody here, and maybe work to improve the way things are going now.
I should, I would too. Here's the one that's calling off the call. You shut up, say it ain't. You want it out of here? Brian Mays, Brian Mays, I need her out. I need her out.
She interrupted, she interrupted the ladies speaking.
You wanna ask me about the pay now?
I wanna ask.
I'm personally looking at the pay. We have a store planning and design team that does that.
That's not this far away.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
This is what you gotta deal with, and that is what I've been doing with since January first. I'm trying to help this city, not negative comments on Facebook, not council talking about each other. We all need to pull together for this city, not just for each person and their goals, and nitpicking, and digging up dirt on people.
I don't want you to ask that question.
So, do you have any questions? Do you want to have any?
We're gonna paint this, we're gonna paint this city blue. How do you get every, what do you do?
Right now...
It's a mess, and we need to change the color or whatever. What do you do?
Right now, it's gonna be up to me. We have a store planning and design, so it might be worth hiring consultants to review what would be good. Because firstly, I don't know if I have the right skill set to design remodeling, I just paint one. Actually, um, no one reported to me at H&R Blog. And Macy's has been going through a hard time, and I don't know if you're familiar with that. I've been there for eighteen years, and I kinda had the capital control part just kinda lumped together. I was actually a manager there since two thousand fifteen, and they did downsizing. They've done it every year. They gave me two weeks to pick a position. I could apply for as many as I wanted, and I applied for two in tax department. It wound up that someone left in capital control, so I got to stay, doing the same job, I just don't supervise people. But I worked with the whole store construction team, the whole New York team, and I worked with different departments, like tax department, under its own department, use tax and sales tax. So, I had to work at all the departments. And yes, there are disagreements at times, but we just, we worked through them.
As professionals do. That's, yeah. You have a right to...
Do you know anybody, do you know anybody in here? Do you know anybody?
I remember you from the bar when I was twenty-one, and you used to...
Do you have security?
Security there. It's been a long time since I've seen you. And I'm familiar with you too. I knew early, but I do not know now.
I share with you that...
I know Kenny too, in Dallas. Hey, I worked up the public office, so I knew quite a bit of you.
Well, I've got a city question for you, but that's something I'm struggling with, is overcapitalization and depreciation schedules in city equipment.
Yeah.
How would you approach a situation from a county standpoint, where you feel that the city is overcapitalized and feel too much depreciation is approaching?
Well, that would be the plan. I would have to look and see how they estimated the plan. Our assets have a different line for the different classifications of assets, and they're depreciated according to that line, it's not just a random plan. Sometimes we'll bump stuff up for the CPI index, but typically, we have a standard appreciation policy of a lot, asset life is assigned to an asset, so you can't just wing, you can't wing it. It's the same with income tax. You're gonna depreciate your building, residential real estates, twenty-seven and a half years, you can't, can't deviate from it.
You asked a question, but Macy's overcapitalized, or over-spends the depreciation system, how would you do about that?
Oh, well, we have, well, things compare to you in budget, so we have to hear the budget. It's gonna go over them. There's certain approvals that have to go in place before they can overspend. They just can't willingly overspend.
They can't expense in lieu of capitalization?
Well, it depends on if it's write-off costs or not, yeah. And under a certain dollar amount, yeah, we do expensive stuff. If it doesn't add to the asset life, or meet a certain criteria, then yeah, it's expensive. Thank you, Shelley. No.
If I may address, Captain Salinger, you're the chairman of the chair. That lady's also compared with the county attorney's office, I'm aware of that, tonight. If we do reach a point, and sir, I hope we don't, that we reach a point where one or more members of this body has to be asked to leave, then it would be my recommendation, yeah, agreeing with the chairman, that the meeting probably should be adjourned at that point, and resume, and so later day. So, I don't know how many more votes we have to talk, we just have the one. So, I would hope that we can keep the emotions in check and let this young lady get up and present, but that would be the recommendation that's been coming from both of us, that if we reach a point that someone needs to be asked to leave, then we should probably adjourn.
Hello. My name is Lily Dean. I live in Creighton, I've been here for about four years. I also work in Grant County. I am a ongoing social worker for the Department of Community Based Services, Protection Department, side of your child abuse protection. Oh, gosh. I am currently a PhD student. I'm working on my criminal justice doctorate. I want to go into rehabilitation. A lot of our focus in the county, as most of you probably know, is on substance abuse with a lot of our parents. I've seen a lot in this line of work. I'm out in the community with people that you guys have probably never even met, in places that some of you have probably never been. I deal with a lot of confrontation, I deal with a lot of sad stories, a lot of really good things. I don't have a background in accounting or anything like that. I am a mom, so I do manage a budget at home. I am familiar with some, you know, expenses versus, you know, what is, what we can actually spend on something, like what is, you know, more appropriate for where our budget needs to designate toward, like obviously... Like obviously, like safety equipment over, you know, hey, does the building need to be painted? Is gonna take precedence. So, uh, at least in my opinion, because I want our entire city to be safe. What I want from this is, my girls live in school here. My girls go to C and D and to the middle school. I want to live here for the rest of my life, bought a house here. Um, that's my goal. You know, I wanna retire here. I want our community to be safe. Our community is not safe, guys. No offense to our police department. You guys rock. You guys do a great job. You do what you can. But it's not. Buildings would be burning down, meth labs if our community was safe. You know, we wouldn't be having arrests, you know, every evening for substance use. We wouldn't have kids born positive. We wouldn't have, you know, all this nonsense that goes on. I would feel safe if my girls going outside to play without me being out there with them, you know, stuff like that, if we had a safe community. I'm not saying that it's not. It's the most horrible place to live in the whole world, but it's not the best either. So what I would like to see is us become more of a community, you know, based area where we do know our neighbors and where our council gets involved. That's what I would like.
Your job is stationed in Lamstown?
Yes, sir.
And you work all, basically?
Entire Grant County.
You lead all of Grant County?
Yep. I work with adults and youth. We also actually, like depending on where we need to go. Um, we are a really well-staffed, um, facility here. We have like one of the most stable teams. Um, people don't quit Grant County. We have great supervisors. Um, I'm sure most of you know Dana McComas. Um, she's amazing. And then Lacy Ralph, um, they're both doing excellent job. Um, so we actually branch out and help other counties too who need help, like Scott, like if they're down a worker. I've got, where, I go to Boone County, Killen County, Grant right now. I'm in three different places depending on where it's at. Um, so wherever they go, wherever they need.
What's some of the issues you see in the youth around here that you have to deal with in Creighton?
A big thing is substance use and incredible disobedience of parents. So like runaways, truancy. Um, I mean, I have a fifteen-year-old girl that was just in our office today that got, uh, picked up and put in her custody for meth and cocaine use. She's fifteen. I mean, it happens every day, guys. I don't think anyone really truly understands until you get into this and get, get the heart of like what is going on. And then we got a lot of grandparents raising kids, you know, because you've got people that are my age. I'm thirty-two. Like I said, I've got, I know I'm not, I know you guys are much wiser, much older than I am, but, you know, I've got grandparents that have children that are, you know, my age, that they're raising their grandkids because of so much drug use. And there's just, nothing's, nothing's helping, nothing's happening. I'd like to see change.
Do you think more activities for the children and the youth than the seniors went before?
Absolutely. Oh, my gosh. Um, so I was doing a study about like after-school programs, and not even just after-school, but about being involved. I mean, my, our middle school, our elementary school, we have no sports teams. I don't know if anyone knows that or not, but like in our school, I would love, I would love for my daughter to go, like, to be able to stay at her school, participate in some kind of activity, and then we pick her up. So we have Good News Club, which is great, which, you know, church-oriented. She does that on Wednesdays. She's eight, by the way. And then we have a soccer league that just opened, but I still have to go home from work, pick her up, take her to soccer, figure out what I'm making for dinner and everything else, and then come back home. I actually have to take her to the soccer field. We were there. My fiance went and sat there with her so I could come here tonight. You know, it, it's just not enough involvement. And the same thing with the middle school. I had a sixth grader. Not once has she brought anything home that says we have after-school program to have involved with these kids. There's nothing out there. You know, what about like, you know, when I was in school, we had like student technology leadership program where they stayed after school and they got to work, you know, computers, science projects, you know, they got to take trips. Kids get excited when they actually get to be involved and they've got stuff going on, and we push them to that. You know, and then especially with, you know, even just having like a community center where they have games available, where they have stuff available for these kids to go and to hang out instead of going to someone's house down the road and shooting up heroin. It's not a joke. It really happens.
Are you familiar with the group called Champions for a Drug Free Grant County?
I, I'm familiar with Champions. I'm not familiar with anything they've done in this county.
Have you engaged with them?
Um, I engage with every single place and people that we have available to us. If they've reached out to us at the cabinet to assist in anything we have going on, or if they've reached out to the CDW, then we engage with them. I've never had them come to us about anything. I know what Champions are, because I don't know if it's the same group, though. It might be a different group in a different county. Because there is a Champions program, I think, in northern, uh, further north, maybe in Creighton. I mean, if they wanna reach out, we are more than willing to take any kind of help they have, any kind of help. Our facility would greatly appreciate it if they would. But that's great. Like I said, like, you know, church groups getting involved, that's, you know, Wednesday. I love, um, Good News Club. My daughter loves it. She stays at school. I think her the pride. She has a good time. She hangs out with, you know, friends. They, they do really good like Bible study classes and stuff, but it's still not an after-school thing, you know? It's not like when...
Yeah, I've never heard of it.
Yeah, it's not like when we were in school where, you know, your mom, dad signed a commission, so when you stay at school, you practice, they come and pick you up. A lot of people have to work. You know, you've got grandparents working, parents working. You know, we all have jobs. You know, we've all gotta do what we have to do to put food on the table, pay the bills. I like living in my house, you know? So I, I just don't have the time to go and do that, and we need something more. This county needs something more, or that's gonna keep happening. And it's completely sad, guys.
Why didn't you want to be a police officer?
Um, so I initially went to school thinking about being a police officer. Um, and I actually started doing, um, my course study on rehabilitation. And the more I looked at it, um, and the more I studied, I've been in school now for a very long time, guys. I'm going on eight years at this point. And I realized that incarceration is not the answer. And I, I hate to say that, but it's not, because when we incarcerate these people, we're not rehabilitating them. We're not giving them any skills to come out and be better. We're just throwing them in there and going, okay, well, we just don't wanna deal with you for a few years, and they get out and they re-upfit. Recidivism rates are insane in this country. Do you realize we are the most concentrated incarcerated population in the entire world? In the entire world. It's insane.
Why don't they incarcerate men rehab while they're in there?
They don't, and that's the thing. They don't, because we don't wanna pay for it, because it's expensive to rehab people. It is. It really is. In hindsight, like this rehab stint, like a true rehabilitation stint, it takes probably more than a year, any kind of rehab, to really be rehabilitated. Nobody wants to pay for it. No insurance company wants to pay for it. Nobody wants to deal with it. They think thirty days is enough. It's not enough. So when you get into jail, they don't give you those skills. So when these people get out, what are they supposed to do? They go right back to crime.
Are you sure you can make your, what lighthouse does your already?
Is it still there? The lighthouse that was on the corner, right? Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I didn't know it was still there, but...
Very much so.
Yeah? No. Thank you.
From my perspective? I'm ready. Do we have a discussion? I don't know what the protocol is. Is this a, is this a discussion public or is it private? It's, it's open, gentlemen. Okay. We can't, there's really no basis to go into an executive session as far as that goes, but I understand. You have people sitting here that you're discussing, but...
Let's ask, uh, Lee, she was, it was the same thing. What did you do?
I was actually just approached, um, and asked if I was interested in, in serving. And, uh, I was, I had been doing constant counseling on me, and I wasn't here when they did it in my capacity.
I would leave. I would leave.
We don't mind, or I don't.
That would be, it would be fully up to them. We can't ask anybody to leave.
I think you would be more comfortable for council to discuss without people in front of them, but...
I, I just don't want council to put any pressure on anybody to feel like they need to step outside.
Uh, I'll tell you.
No.
Welcome to stay. About the same note, we can't. Chair's not allowed. We're gonna keep you in, I don't know, so...
You'll lock us out?
Various skills and abilities to the table here, so... It would bring different...
I'm very impressed.
Yeah, I'm glad we had three people that were, that were interested for, for all these awards.
Let's do it this way, Joe. If each one, you know, just give you a name, who you want, and majority.
I, I, I'm going with whatever Joe says.
That's way too much pressure, Al.
Sorry, Joe, you're on the floor.
Who do you think, Charlie?
Well, from a high-level standpoint, our candidate that talked about, uh, drug use, substance use, all of the two formal store organizations that deal with passions on the community. Uh, so immediately, very great talker, high-energy, good person, but not plugged in to the two areas where she has a passion. Uh, so I have to discount that. Uh, the question I asked of our accountant, uh, wasn't a good answer for someone that's familiar with operational budgets, depreciation, the value of depreciation, the value of capitalization, the value of expense. That wasn't level or technical. In my book, would she add some benefit to the discipline of managing money and dealing with our outside auditors? I think so. But my experience, basic fundamentals of operational budgets are key to what your capital expense are. And she couldn't, she couldn't answer that question. I think she could come up with how we tax things very well, uh, so I discount that. So that leaves our third candidate, and my opinion is, I've seen a strong interest in, in attending these meetings. Uh, I know that he's talked to people in the, I don't know the guy before I sat in this first, this first meeting. Uh, but I know he's been engaged, in engagement, and he means it a lot, so seeing that a lot of meetings.
I am too.
And then these outspoken board of willings and the outspoken people. So that's where my hits are.
I'm sorry. I thought you were... I'm blinking. I'm sorry. Um... I mean, Todd showed such an interest in, in here and very wanting to be involved, you know?
I like Todd Roberts. I feel I got it. Well... He would have heard some of his Facebook sound.
His what?
His Facebook.
Well, I heard a good point of question, please. Will the new candidate give the League of Cities training like we did?
That, that was him.
So we, we can hold him down to the bubbles coming up? I'm not sure what you would do, but I would encourage, uh, him to go to one as soon as possible. They have, uh, probably won't be born until, and there may be something else, maybe they have a crash course. I went to the same thing years ago that you guys went to in January, so I'm, I'm the one that's, yeah, I'm looking for whatever available.
I like this panel answer. He's gonna talk to everybody, get everybody...
How did you? Say it to him. I like him. But he wasn't just, uh, just like one person. He was, he wanted everybody's opinion.
Mayor of the discuss, if the discussions, I mean, just to have a suggestion, so I want him to be prepared to make a motion, uh, nominating or recommending the church.
All right. I'll, I'll do it. I'll, I nominate Todd Roberts.
There never need to be a second, of course, also. And then I would suggest one last call for the last discussion. It's a good point. Bodies operate slightly in ways, so... Saying none, the mayor wants to call a debate? Chair, do you have a, can you, can we work humanity?
I know, so how do we communicate?
I vote, vote to be public record, of course, so it was fine. You're probably a nice awake and public record. Well, I meant that we might as well go and tell them that...
The council had decided to build a Bickin's Farm, John Williams, with Todd Roberts. Todd, we need to sort it out, let's make it here as soon as possible. And the council, like, we're free to know. When, when the time comes, Kentucky League of Cities has training for city council members that they would like to get a ten, if that's possible. I don't think anything's on the table right now on the calendar for, for new council members, but it usually goes around once a year. And it's, uh, maybe a three-day training, uh, paid for by the city. The city takes care of that, and you're lodging your bills. And, uh, it's, it's something that's very educational. In closing, you do have that special meeting coming up April twenty-ninth at six p.m. in regards to the interruptal agreements. And, uh, we don't need the, the council to be, uh, involved during that meeting. It's gonna be built in the R-five zone for the city of Creighton, Creighton, that the zoning goes and...
Is, is it really R-five they're going to do? I, I looked through the plan, the government book, and looked at the comprehensive plan and all that. So R-one through R, will we have these in R-five?
That's what they're trying to do. Now, the, the apartment owners, the, the people, uh, property owners that want to get this changed, them and Becky Rual just came up with another R-five. And this is gonna be a new...
Oh, piece. Okay, okay.
It's gonna be a new zoning, and that, uh, the bird properties, I think is the name. Certainly get a packet ready for council in order to let council know what's going on. It's gonna have conditions on it. It's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, something that's gonna, that you guys will have inside what you wanna do. If it doesn't pass through, uh, for, for you guys, then, uh, or council, then it doesn't go to plan. So this is the first step that's to be taken, is to get a change to an R-five. They will, uh, they will bring that packet and that, uh, demonstration and, and draft of, of the property and what's going on there and what their proposal is.
They need the plan to sell it.
Bird's property, not a burden property. She's the one that bought the seventeen acres. And her and her attorneys are getting together this packet right now. We had a, a meeting with Becky Rual. And, uh, because it's, what's there now, the R-three, anything, you know, if they, they was to approve that, then you're gonna have places go up all over that don't have conditions, and they won't put conditions on it.
So R-five's new, that's why it's not in the book. I understand that's why it's not in the comprehensive plan.
It's brand new.
I would only reject with all due respect to the mayor and the councilperson, at some point, the discussion, this topic might get beyond the bounds of...
Right.
Uh, a special meeting, and I, I'd begin, you know, I, I hesitate to say my off, but obviously, we're trying to make it, uh, to a year or a little closer, and I, I wanted certainly some free flow of information.
One last sentence, please.
Sure.
I spent two hours doing homework on this. I would encourage the council members to look through their books and do their homework. Consistency with existing comprehensive plan and this being new, we need to be prepared for that.
Consistency with existing comprehensive plan and this being new, we need to prepare for that.
Why are we having two separate meetings? Why can't we combine them?
Because the caucus meeting, you cannot vote in a caucus meeting, and this will be a vote on that R five.
We can't change our caucus meeting. You already released, so we would have to be just separate ones?
It's already been announced.
Well, and I would like to say that I hope that in the future, when we have special meetings, that we host those appropriately according to the other meetings law.
Our next regular council meeting will be Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, at seven P.M. And caucus meeting Tuesday at the thirty, at seven P.M.